2022 at 7:30 PM in the automatic chamber. Vice President Michael B. O'Brien, Senior, yours truly, will be presiding. Clerk Dan Haley will be the recording officer. Today's prayer will be offered by the City Clerk Dan Haley, and Alderman Ernest Juddy will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, folks, if you notice somebody's different standing up here tonight, some people it seems to have got the holiday flu, another gift Santa has bestowed. So let's be careful out there as we intermingle and everything. So I'm sure on behalf of all of us, we wish our colleagues who are ill this evening a speedy recovery and hopefully they can get back soon to the chamber. So, but that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Gueye.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire. You have 11 present, four absent.
I'll declare a quorum. Also in attendance is Honored Mayor James W. Donches and Corporate Counsel Stephen Bolton. Remarks by the mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have a few items of information tonight which I wanted to pass along. First, we learned late last week that we were awarded, Nashville was awarded, two grants as a result of legislation recently passed by Congress. We had applied for and were awarded a $3 million grant to improve the park between the library and the court building. This is a project that began several years back when the Director of the Library, Jen McCormick, observes fighting and misconduct, including fighting, out in that area. And it seemed that we needed to improve that park and activate it for the benefit of, because it could be better used, and to head off this kind of misconduct. So as a result, we undertook a project to design, at least in concept, a park project there, and took considerable public input at the time. A report was generated by a landscape architect firm that we retained in about October of 2020 with a conceptual design. And there were some initial estimates placed on the construction of what was proposed. Obviously, a couple of years have gone by. You did vote, the Board of Aldermen voted, to allocate a million and a half dollars of the ARPA funds towards this project, not enough to complete it. But now we've received this grant for an additional $3 million. So Community Development Director Matt Sullivan and his staff will be looking at this, potentially trying to review the design, will be reporting to you in the future about it, and may want to adjust the design a little bit, but certainly it is good news that we received this grant. Also, another grant we received was for nearly $500,000 to repair the windows at the Court Street Building. So the windows, not the Court Street Building, the Hunt Building. So the Hunt Building, as you know, historic structure, formerly the City Library. In the main rotunda up above, there are several, a couple of stories up, there are windows that obviously let in light to the main rotunda area. Those windows leak. Now, fairly seriously, this is a historic structure, 100 years old plus, 120 years old, and it is leaking seriously. So the, because of its historic nature, because of the height of the repairs and all that, this is not, this is an expensive project, estimated to be around $1 million. So we applied for and received a grant in the maximum amount for this particular category of $490,000 approximately to help pay for those repairs. And I want to thank Senator Shaheen and her staff, as well as Congresswoman Custer and her staff, for all of their support and help. They worked with us throughout the entire process, helped get this into congressionally designated spending, I think it's what it's called. And as a result of that, we will be getting these funds sometime in the near future. We're not sure of the exact timing yet. Some not-so-great news at the state level. You might have read that the Executive Council, the Executive Council voted to not to continue the little final steps that are required on what the state DOT calls the final planning phase of the Capitol Corridor Rail Project. I think what happened is that there needed to be a contract extension, therefore it had to go to the Executive Council. They denied the contract extension on a divided vote. You might recall that this project requires, this project, at least this planning phase, requires no state funds whatsoever, federally funded with a, with the state match provided by something called toll credits, which come free to the state of New Hampshire as a result of work done on the two toll roads. These toll credits can serve as local match. And the DOT testified numerous times in the legislature that they have a surplus of toll credits, they're accumulating more quickly than they can use them, and the fact that toll credits had to be used for this project would have no impact, you know, in any respect on any other, they would not, they would always have enough match for all the projects they wanted to do. Our counselor, Counselor David Wheeler, the one who theoretically represents Nashville, voted to terminate this contract or not extend it, despite the overwhelming sentiment of Nashuaans and polling, statewide polling strongly in favor of passenger rail. So that's an unfortunate event. It can be reversed by the legislature, and there have been several times when the legislature has voted on this, so we may see some action or attempted action there. Now, some good news. The state DES last week permitted Phase Four of the Nashville landfill, which is the phase that would, that when constructed, will enable the landfill to last for some decades longer. It's hard to say exactly, 30 to 50 years beyond the, beyond from today. So this will greatly extend the landfill, will allow the area between two mounds to be used, and this is something that Lisa Foto and her staff, Jeff LaFleur, everybody at the landfill has worked very hard on for some years, really, to try to get this permitted. And so for them and for the city, it's very good news that we did get this permit. I have a little bit of a cold, too, Mr. Vice President, so I'm sorry if I cough here. One thing on your agenda is the recommendation from Julian Long that we dedicate $450 of home funds for the project to take place at 249 Main Street, which is just down the street, the empty parking lot across from CBS. Neighbor Works is going to do the project. This will be totally an affordable housing project. It is a great partnership because Neighbor Works is an organization that is very active in Manchester, owns units here in Nashville as well and operates them. They are a very responsible, very landlord and owner of affordable housing units. They're an organization we've worked with extensively in the past, and we could not have a better sponsor-owner of a project like this. So I hope you will follow his recommendation and allocate these home funds to Neighbor, to that project. The, and there's a summary of the work in your packet. Home funds are funds allocated to the city by the federal government to promote, basically, affordable housing and other similar projects. And we get a certain amount every year. Next, and this, I think, will be my final item, Mr. President. As you may know, one of our state representatives from Ward Four resigned, and it has always been our custom, we want a full delegation. The procedure, and City Clerk Healy can provide any details that you would like, but the procedure to fill a empty state rep seat is for a special election. In order for this to occur, Mr. Healy is working, has worked with the Secretary of State's office, and in order for this to occur, there needs to be basically a request for a special election voted upon and approved by the Board of Aldermen. Once that occurs, and you, this, you see a letter on your desk from Mr. Healy. In order for the special election to occur, the Board of Aldermen needs to approve a request, a simple motion that, you know, authorizing the city clerk or the city in general to write to the, to the governor and council and tell them that we would like to have a special election. They in turn approve the request, and then Mr. Healy works with the Secretary of State to schedule the date of the election. In fact, there have already been discussions, Mr. Healy has already had discussions with the Secretary of State's office as to when this election could be held and how it would be organized. It would just be in the one ward, Ward Four. And it doesn't, it's not necessary to approve this tonight, but, you know, in order to get this filled as soon as possible, tonight would be helpful. It doesn't seem controversial. We've always had these special elections in the past to fill vacant seats, and the session hasn't even begun, so we could probably get this filled pretty early and have a 27-member rather than a 26-member delegation. So I ask for your consideration of an approval of a letter to the state to get the ball rolling and get the special election scheduled. And finally, Happy New Year to everyone. Hope you have a happy and your families a happy and prosperous 2023. Hope you had wonderful holiday season, and let's work together over the course of 2023 to make Nashville an even better place to live. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any response to remarks, Odebe? Alderman Kelly?
Sorry, my mic isn't close enough. Thank you. I also wanted to thank you for bringing up the commuter rail piece of it. I know it won't come up later in our agenda, and I was very disappointed to see it go down again with one and a half million left in that study. It's something that's critically important to Nashville and the infrastructure of the state, and I'm hoping that 2023 will be a time for us to figure out how to continue that forward. So thank you for bringing that up.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank our grant writer for working so hard to get us these grants to the Hunt Building as well as to the library. And in respect to the toll credits that the mayor had, has brought up, that has been so controversial because we have them sitting there and they're not being used. And we cannot, even if I think we got rid of all the tolls right now, we would still have plenty to take care of all oncoming projects. They've just been sitting there accumulating, 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 and it just makes you wonder, you, you know, you don't want to sit there and say, they just hate Nashville. But I'm beginning to feel like they just hate Nashville, and it, and I don't understand it, and it makes me very frustrated and very aggravated as both an ex-state rep and a resident of Nashville as well. And I want to echo the words from the mayor about the Neighbor Works home funds. I was there at the, at the Human Affairs meeting when they spoke, and I can see that he's here, too, as well. It's extremely important that we do pass this. It's a great plan. They had to tweak it a little bit to make sure that we met all the criteria, and I won't go into the details of it, but it is extremely important, and when that subject comes up, we can discuss it then. But thank you.
Alderman Juddy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So through you to the mayor or, or Mr. Healy, the mayor mentioned a letter about the special election being on our desks, but I don't see any such letter, and I don't know if there is a letter or...
Yes, and you are correct, but the letter received by Mr. Haley will be read into the record and the discussion be had. You're just a little bit ahead of me on the game, but when we get to the end of correspondence, that will be read into the record. Then I will seek a motion to see if Mr. Healy can go forward after a, of course, you know, comment by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments to the mayor? Seeing none, we'll end that portion. Recognition period.
None.
Reading a minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen meeting on October 13th, 2022, and November 28th, 2022 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons. To the clerk.
Communication has been received from Thomas J. Leonard, Chairman, Penachuk Corporation, regarding special meeting of the sole shareholder, January 27th, 2023. Communication has been received from Larry D. Goodhue, Chief Executive Officer, Penachuk Corporation, regarding request for approval guaranteed by Penachuk Corporation of loan to Penachuk East Utility, Inc., from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Okay. There being no objection, I'll accept the communications, place them on file, and refer them to the Penachuk Special Water Committee. To the clerk.
Communication has been received from Julian Long, Urban Program Manager, regarding underwriting analysis of home program application, Neighborhood Works of Southern New Hampshire, Apartments at 249 Main Street. Update.
Okay. Also, there being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items to be expected to be acted on this evening. We have just one person to sign up, Mr. Robert Torrini, if I said the name correctly. Can you please step forward, give your name and your address, and there'll be a three-minute period. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Robert Torrini. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Works of Southern New Hampshire, the members of the Bronx District of Manchester. I don't have a three-minute worth of public comment at this point in time. The mayor did a fine job of introducing the role of Neighborhood Works of Southern New Hampshire and the project that's before you tonight for receiving the recommendation and view repairs committee for home funds, and so I simply wanted to let the board know that I am available for comment.
Do I need to start over?
No.
No, okay. That I'm simply, that I'm available for comment, questions, if, you know, later on during discussion, if you have any. So thank you for your support. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Anybody else I would like to speak that did not sign up for public comment? Seeing no one, communications requiring final approval. To the clerk.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director, regarding communication approval and place on file a contract for professional services related to the Nashville Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project for HSI, Inc.
Okay. There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Finance Committee. Now, at this point, we'll bring up communications that the board has received after the agenda was prepared. And I will ask, with the indulgence of the board, we do have a communications from the City Clerk, Mr. Dan Haley, if you could read your correspondence into the record, please.
Okay. Dear President Wilshire, I have been informed that Representative Stacy Marie Lawton, Ward Four, has submitted her resignation to the House Clerk. The office of State Representatives shall be filled following the provisions of RSA 655-81 and RSA 655-82 by a special election if dislectment of any town or the city for any ward in said district so request of the governor or council. Sincerely, Daniel R. Healy, City Clerk.
Okay. Seeing without objection, I'll accept the communication as read into the record. Mr. Haley, would you, at this particular time, want to give us a little synopsis of what the baseline of this is?
Yes, so one of our representatives duly elected out of Ward Four has resigned effective December 22nd. So the term's just beginning, it's a two-year term. So the typical process is the town or city submits to the Executive Council and Governor if they would like a special election to be held, and then the Executive Council and Governor will vote to hold or to not hold the special election. Typically, they've gone off the recommendation of the town or city. If they would like to hold one, they typically do schedule that election. Being a state representative, there's typically a primary and a general election in a normal cycle, so depending on the number of candidates that sign up, you could potentially be having a primary and a general election. It would be if one person filed as Democrat, one person filed as Republican, you could go right to the general, but if more than one person filed on either side, you'd be required to have a primary and a general election. So this, the RSA reads that once it's voted on by the Executive Council, starting, I think, that Tuesday, it's 110, the election needs to be held 110 to 124 days, the general election, from that date. And then the primary election would be held 49 days prior, and then the filing period starts, I believe, the following week. So if you have, say, one person on each side file, you, the RSA says you can skip the general election, and the primary date then becomes the general election date. So once the Executive Council and Governor vote, the earliest that an election could occur, based off of the math, would be 61 days if you have just one-on-one, one-on-one raise. So the timeframe, I guess, all depends on, you know, how many people file and when the Executive Council and Governor would take up and vote on having a special election. But it could be 110 days away, or it could be, you know, closer to 60 days.
Okay. Before I open it up for discussion from the board, I would like to do it under the pretense of a motion. Does any member of this body seem to make, would like to make a motion to authorize City Clerk Haley to establish communications with the Secretary of State to have special elections? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I move for the, our City Clerk to work with the city, I'm sorry, the Secretary of State to have the special election for Ward Four.
Since we have a motion pending, I'll open it up for discussion on the motion. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I just want to say that, I don't know Representative Lawton at all, but I, you know, regardless of what her situation is, I'll let the courts decide that. But I want to thank her for coming forward and resigning, because I think it's the right thing to do for Nashville, to make sure that we have people that can participate in the State House for our city. And so I thank her for that, knowing when to, you know, resign. I'm for this. I mean, I think, obviously, we should fill it, and I hope that everybody feels the same way. I mean, we want representation, and Ward Four should have it at the State House. Thank you.
Further comment? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of establishing communications via City Clerk Healy with the Secretary of State, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nomination, appointments, and elections?
Board of Assessors. Abdallah J. Minkarah, new appointment, indefinite term at the pleasure of the mayor, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064. Ethics Review Committee, Timothy E. Bush, new appointment, term to expire January 1st, 2026, 378 Bain Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committee? There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the October 13th, 2022, October 19th, 2022, and the November 28th, 2022 budget review committee be accepted and placed on file.
Point of order.
Also, Planning Economic Development Committee? There being no objection, I'll declare that the report of the October 18th, 2022, Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Point of order.
Point of order.
Sorry, Mr. Vice.
I'm sorry, I was looking down, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Vice. I'm not sure, maybe I have the wrong agenda, but I see that there was supposed to be a motion to award a contract to HSI. Did we go over that?
Yes, we did.
It was referred to finance. I don't think we voted on it.
Correct.
Oh, it looks like it's been approved by us? No? Okay. Thank you, I got confused.
Oh, I'm glad you got it cleared up. Okay, thank you. Now you made me lose my space. No, we're at the, with no objection, I'll declare the report of October 18th, 2022, of the Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-22-076, approving the use of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program Funds by Neighborhood Works of Southern New Hampshire for the Apartments at 249 Main Street.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, VP O'Brien. I move for final passage of R-22-076.
Okay, we have a motion, a final passage. Discussion on the motion? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I believe this project is great for the city to bring affordable, low-income housing to this, to our city in an area that really needs it, and in an area that would benefit from, instead of an empty parking lot, housing. And I congratulate, I thank Neighbor, Neighbor Works for bringing this project to the city in Nashville. Thank you.
Further comment? Alderman Kelly.
I'd like to echo the words of my colleague and the mayor. This is a critically important housing development, and it's so important to what we need to do here in Nashville. I was unfortunately not at the presentation because I was very ill, but I know that this is going to be a great project, and I thank the gentleman from Neighbor Works who came this evening.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll declare the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution R-22-076 declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of O-22-038, establishing fees for parking spaces utilized for extended outdoor dining.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for final
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for final passage of O-22-38, and I'd like to discuss it briefly.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So this was discussing committee. This is the fees for the outdoor dining. It was given a favorable recommendation by the committee and has the support of several downtown businesses who will be utilizing these spaces. They understand that there is a need for them to participate in the, you know, putting out the barriers and removing them, and basically participating in some of, defraying some of those costs. It was discussed at committee that this was a good compromise number. This was also, was also discussed that, you know, this is a one-year plan for next year, and at the end of the year, we can revisit, we have to revisit it to see what we would do in the years coming as far as the fees go. So all in all, this, this was really done with, with, you know, the idea that there was community input that said the restaurants should participate, the restaurants understand that they have to participate. I think most of my colleagues here understand that, and this was the, the number that we came up with. I think this is good legislation. I, I hope I can get everyone's support for this. Thank you.
Okay. Open for discussion on the motion, Alderman Kelly, then Alderman Cle.
Thank you. I'm going to support this. This makes a lot of sense. As a downtown business owner, I see, you know, what these spaces have done for restaurants. I like that it is a one-year, because I'm hoping that in January, we're going to hear about this parking study we've been hearing about for a long time, and we'll be able to better assess how this is going to fit into all the parking information we're going to get out of that. So, thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am going to support it. And I, and I am glad that it, it's a one-year plan so that we can kind of get a feel for what, what's going to happen. I think that was a, a good, a good move. But to my fellow colleagues, I'm going to say is that we do have to follow up on it sooner than later. We can't let things slide into the very last moment, which means probably the moment the season is done, we have to collect as much data from whoever is in economic development or community development and so on, so that we get a better understanding. These businesses need to budget, and if we're going to go up on the price, or if for some reason we're going to go down on the price, so be it. But we need to, it takes us a long time to get things moving. We have a lot of discussion, we have a lot of committees and so on. So I really say that we have, we, as a group, have to stay on the ball and kind of chase this down, and don't let it slide until it's too late and they haven't put it into their budget. So I, I would like to see us make sure we work on that when we do a revisit on it. But I, I think it was a good idea. It's too new to just come up with something and say this is going to be for three years. It, it could be too low, it could be too high. And there were a lot of businesses that, from what we were told, that did agree on it. There were some that would have liked it a little less, and some that probably would have been able to bear a higher, higher cost. You know, maybe next time we'll look at the side streets will have less cost, and the, the main street would have more cost. I don't know. But that's for us to do when we do our homework in, in the fall. Hopefully, by October, we can already start working on it. So, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Moran, and then Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There being no objection, can I read a letter into the record from Michael Buckley?
Without objection.
Dear Alderman O'Brien and Moran, I'm hoping that one of you could read the attached statement for tonight. Respectfully, Michael Buckley, Chief Owner, Michael Timothy's Dining Group, 212 Main Street, Nashua. To the Board of Alderman and Planning and Economic Committee, as I stated in the past, I am in support of the fee associated with the barriers in downtown Nashua to facilitate a vibrant dining and cultural element. I agree that a $500 fee per space used would be a fair and acceptable sum. This should significantly offset lost revenue incurred by the city and its taxpayers. Respectfully, Michael T. Buckley. I hope for that Donna to have available for public record and request. Additionally, I spoke to several bars downtown over the past month or so, Matt Casey at Casey McGee's. I recently won a second place in an ugly sweater contest there. But in the conversation, he talked about how now that he's paying for the space, he's going to do more to the space. He's, uh, make it more attractive, and I think that's the right mindset for any entrepreneur, is to now invest more into turning over a profit and working with the city in a public-private partnership. Also spoke to Martha's. They were very excited about the plan. I spoke to the manager there. I, for one, would like to see a little bit more money charged, but I'm considering this an introductory offer. You know, you get a, I have a lease on a commercial property. It goes up 3% every year. I think that's how we should treat this after we gather data, if it makes sense. And I do support this as it is written now, with the hopes of raising fees in the future. Thank you.
Okay, and you did say that that copy of that letter would go into the Administrative Assistance for the record?
Yep, and for any public records request.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think six months ago, I probably would have voted against this, but I listened to committee, I thought about it. I thought that the program should be covered by the people that enjoy the, enjoy the benefits of it. But to my colleague, to my right, I, I think it, it is interesting that if you give people something, perhaps they won't value it. And now that they are being charged for it, while it's not the amount I would have gone for, in the spirit of compromise, it's there. I will support this, and I'd like to see us go back at this once the parking study comes out, once we can see where things go from here. So, yeah, I'll support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, no, I agree with the legislation as written, and I agree with my colleague across the horseshoe here that it is, I think it should be treated more as a introductory offer, as you will. Would I like to see that price go up to kind of level off what we're spending in the city portion compared to the restaurant portion? Yes. But I think there's a lot that can go into it. It was something when we did the whole discussion of outdoor dining, it was something I wanted to look into, was the fee that would be associated with these restaurants. So I think this is a good step in the right direction, and I think we can, we can build off of it and hopefully come up with a very successful program. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly, and then Alderman Karen.
Sorry. Two quick comments. I think that the idea about bringing together and making sure we have some information after the season's really important, and I think we should figure out what that mechanism is, like you said, way before the end of the summer into the fall, whether that's economic development, there's going to be some sort of costs associated with someone making sure that happens, unless every one of us is going to take a business owner, which I'm happy to do. The other thing, I have talked with some of the downtown business owners, I think, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a change tonight. I think you guys did your work in your committee. I think we should consider proportionality to sales, because something like a coffee shop that's not doing, you know, late-night sales like a Casey McGee, it's, it's, it's a really high-end price for some of them. So, something to think about. I'm sure you guys have done, it's one of the committees I'm not on, but I think we should consider that once we gather the information from this year.
Thank you. Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting last week, because I would have made my voice known. As you know, I was not a big fan of these barriers being put up. But when we talked about the legislation, and my suggestion was try to do it for one year, and how do we do this without, you know, making it difficult for the Board to try to make decisions? But the other thing is, I think a $500 per space was a good starting point. I agree, you know, things can go up or down depending on what goes on. But I think it's so important right now. We have been waiting for this parking study for six months. I have held people off for legislation forever, and I think that until we get that, how are we going to make major decisions concerning the future of downtown and the parking and these venues and things, that we want to make sure that they are still providing service to their customers and whatever we want to do for them, especially with the new center coming on board in April. So I think all these ideas, you know, should really be taken up during committee, and I really think that the study or getting information from the restaurants should be done sooner. We don't have to wait till the end of the season. We should be gathering that in July and August, because once the kids start going back to school, things get a little quiet, let's face it. Nobody's sitting outside in 50-degree weather, you know, in September or October. So I think this, as Alderman Sullivan said six months ago, I would have said, no. But I think that the committee prevailed and worked really diligently to try to get the best for what they could for the first time, and I appreciate you going along with the one-year recommendation that I had put forth. So I appreciate that, and I certainly will support it. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, one thing Alderman Kelly said is about the, I thought was a good idea, and it's hard, because, you know, you got the different restaurants with the different, you know, Martha's compared to, you know, one of the smaller side-street restaurants. And I think this was a good compromise for people who maybe thought that they should get 300, or the bigger restaurant should get 1,000 or 600, 700. And so I think it was a good compromise to start. I think it will be good. I think, as far as the Planning and Economic Development Committee, I think we should have this on the, the agenda for probably September, to at least start the ball rolling. We may not have a ton of, I mean, people still go out in September. We do have some hot weeks there in September at times. But I think we should get it on that, that committee meeting so that we know, even if we're just saying, hey, where are we with this? So that we, we can talk, and it should be on Octobers and Novembers, and probably maybe have an, an extra meeting if we need to, to discuss it, because it will run, you know, to Alderman, Alderman Cle's comment about, we don't want to lose sight of it, and then all of a sudden, like, oh, runs out, and, oh, now we can't charge him for next year. So we want to make sure that we're on top of this, and I think it's a good compromise. And I'm pleased that a lot of us are, everybody so far has signed on to it, because I knew it was a little controversial. So, thank you for, for everybody that supports it.
Alderman Clemmons.
And, and just one, one brief point that, that wasn't mentioned that I do think is important. I think the real first indication that we're going to see is how many people actually, how many restaurants participate initially from this, right, and, and how many, if any, don't. I mean, any restaurant that I've talked to, they've been interested in wanting to do it still, even with the fee. So I, I'm hopeful that everybody that participated last year will do so this year. But we'll see what happens, and I just want to say that's, that's our starting off point. And then from there, we have to survey the restaurants and see how to go. So.
Further discussion of the motion? Alderman Cle.
It's not on the motion, Mr. President, and I apologize, but I just received a text message from Mr. Griffin, and he said the HSI contract should be voted on for final approval. It does not need to go to the Finance Committee. It's under 9B.
I knew it. I'll have to refer the Corporate Counsel, who is not prepared for tonight's on the agenda.
Okay. So he said that it needed to get voted on, so I would let Corporate Counsel.
I think you should finish.
I should think you should finish what you're doing.
Right, yeah, I would. I think that's right. Thank you. Further discussion on the motion only?
Yes.
Seeing none, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, duly declare ordinance 0-22-038, declared duly adopted. At this particular time, with the addition of new information, I withhold that to the more appropriate time within the agenda. New business resolutions?
First reading of R-22-078, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2023 Relative to the Community Development Block Run, CDVG.
Given its first reading, I'll assign the City Human Affairs Committee.
Point of order. You didn't ask for sponsors.
Pardon?
Sponsors. You didn't ask for additional sponsors.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you. Additional sponsors, please? We have Alderman Kelly, Alderman Karen, Alderman Terrible, Tebow, excuse me, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Cle, and you can throw down O'Brien on that. Thank you, Alderman Kelly.
Of course.
Okay. To the clerk? When ready?
First reading of R-22-079, approving guarantee by Pennechuck Corporation of a loan to Pennechuck East Utility Inc. from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran? Alderman O'Brien? And I'll assign that to the Pennechuck Special Water Committee. And new business ordinances?
None.
Okay. At this time, let me refer, we'll have a slight pause. Yes.
It doesn't need to be approved tonight. It does not need to be approved tonight.
It does not need to be?
No, no. I mean, the agenda says that, but there might be some miscommunication there. This, you know, Tim Cummings has been very involved with this. We talked about it today. It can go, he, he was expecting it to go to the Finance Committee. He talked with Donna on that score, so there's no need to vote on this tonight. It can be correctly referred to the Finance Committee and then discussed and brought back. I think Mr. Griffin is simply reading the agenda, which, you know, is a little unclear with this, but it does not need to be voted on tonight.
And that, I would have to agree, that seems to be more in line with our custom of this particular Board. So we'll go with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Corporate Counsel. Okay, new business ordinances? I already said that, didn't I? So, period for general public comment. Nobody has signed up, so therefore we'll move on to remarks by members of the Board of Alderman. We'll start over to my left, Alderman Timmons.
I'd just like to wish everyone a kinder and happy new year.
Thank you. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I would echo Alderman Timmons's comments. You know, I think this was our, some of us' first year, and we're in the learning curve, and I learned a ton, and I really appreciate working with all of you, and I look forward to a happy 2023, and we can get a lot of great things done in the city and continue our work. So thank you, everybody.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy new year, and looking forward to working with everyone in 2023.
Alderman Gavea.
Thank you. I'll just keep out going, Happy New Year, everybody.
Alderman Kelly.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
I wish everybody a safe and happy new year.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, in the, in the, the language of my French-Canadian ancestors, je vous souhaite une joyeux Noël, une bonne et heureuse année, et le paradis à la fin de tes jours. Translated, that means I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, in paradise at the end of your days. And as my father would reply to that, "Thank you, but I'm in no hurry." And he wasn't. He lived to the age of 104.
God bless.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Little culture amongst us here, due language. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to wish everyone a very happy and wonderful new year.
Alderman Sullivan.
Peer pressure, Happy New Year.
We're going to keep it going. Alderman Cle.
I'll change it up a little bit and just go ditto.
Does Corporate Counsel and the Mayor want to wish everybody Happy New Year?
I already did.
You can do it again.
Happy New Year.
Corporate Counsel?
Happy New Year.
And to our clerk.
Happy New Year.
Yes, too. And I would like to wish everybody a very healthy, safe, and prosperous new year. Let's hope it was better than the old one, as they always say. All right, committee announcements. We'll start over to my right. I don't see any committee announcements, so that, moving right along. We're going to get to the adjournments, so I'll look to Alderman Cle.
I'm sorry, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
I know Alderman Dowd isn't here, but I just wanted to make sure that we remind everybody that there's no budget meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, yes, go ahead. So there's a budget meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM?
There was supposed to be, it's canceled.
Oh, it was canceled?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, just wanted to make sure nobody shows up here tomorrow night.
Yeah, please do not show up tomorrow night. No. And also to Alderman Dowd, is one of the ones missing, and hope he is feeling better. Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Therefore, a motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President. I motion that the December 27th, 2022, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 8:20. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.